Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Abington School Committee meeting here on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the Middle High School Library. If I could ask everybody to please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into our agenda, I'm gonna go look at it's gonna be an issue, but we have a public hearing on school choice participation for the 2026-2027 school year that's starting right now, so if anybody would like to address the committee regarding, I'll give it one second. So if anybody would like to address the committee regarding school choice, now would be the time to let us know. It's further on the agenda where we'll vote on whether or not we'll participate next year. So if anybody would just please step to the podium regarding school choice. Okay, I'm going to officially close the public hearing then at this point, and we'll move on to the items in our agenda. So first, if anybody would like to address the committee on anything else, now's the time, hearing visitors, if you do, once again, please just step to the podium and state your name and address for the records. Okay, first up is the reading and approval of minutes from our October 28th, 2025 meeting. I'll just be looking for a motion to approve or amend the minutes after the committee gets a chance to look them over.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Up next is the report of the Director of Student Services, Dr. Robbins. I'll take it, if anybody has a question, you can step to the podium. So we have a, in your packet, there's a request for home education program from Dr. Robbins. If anybody has any questions, he's more than happy to step to the podium. This would be for this school year, the remainder of this school year. If there's no questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the home education program as presented in the packet.
If I can make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, report of the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bost, I'll let you do the introduction if you want.
Great, he's gonna be here tonight and giving us his annual update for the music department. We have Mr. Tim Leonelli.
Good evening, it's nice to see you all again, friends, colleagues, neighbors, I just have so much good news. And Dr. Bost, so thank you for organizing this to happen right after some incredible events for us, so this is a perfect timing. Before I do, I just wanna make sure I thank our incredible music staff, marching band staff, Pete Serino for his endless support, football operations coaches, the team, all this support just makes our work so much easier. Bud, he literally went out of his way in the halls to track me down saying, man, Mr. Leonelli, the band looks really good, the kids look really good. And even Coach Keller, before he retired, he offered to bring down a xylophone, this was a couple of years ago, from, you know, the top of the steps of Moray Field to the bottom, and I told him, no, 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 thank you, I appreciate it. But that type of support just makes the work that we do just so much easier, and so thank you, and of course to all of you as well. I have even more good news that's not on listed in the record. So we, this past weekend, we had three students accepted to represent the public school systems at the district level, vocal, vocally, which is incredible. This is Greg Fish, our drum major, the lead in the play from this past weekend, they performed Thursday, Friday, did the parade on Saturday, and then auditioned and made it, so absolutely incredible. Hope Murtagh, a rising star, also one of the leads in the play, and Leah Day, our fashionable director in the play, also was accepted as well, and included in all-state recommendation to audition for the best of the best vocal ensemble in the state. That hasn't happened in my time here, so this is just incredibly, incredibly exciting. As I've told you, yeah, right, it's just so exciting. As I've told you over the years, we're a community first, music department, we focus on just building great humans first with music as our vehicle, to represent not only the music, the notes and all that stuff, but the work that you all do, our staff does here as well, we pride ourselves on that to make sure that we share what we all do, even with notes and rhythms and dancing flags, you know, we do wanna share what we do probably well, and hopefully inspire and engage our community, which is perfect, because look at all those great smiling kids. And this has been such a fun fall season, I think Ms. Hernandez and I, we were talking a while ago, and we're just, we're just like, we're just gonna have so much fun this year, and we truly did. Our Abington Champions marching band have earned their second title, they're the Group One Regional Eight U.S. Band's Massachusetts State Championships, a recent program score of 90.5, they were actually in second place all year, and we took it at the very end, very, very deserving, so in my humble opinion, and won all captions, so incredibly exciting. I also wanna share when it comes to engagement, Abington News, the article that they put up has 630 likes and 92 comments, so there's a lot of engagement regarding the students' accomplishments, which is exciting. We also just performed at America's Hometown Thanksgiving Celebration Parade, yes, it is that title, which I typically get like a, something in the mail that says, oh, bring your band to this, and I always cheekily respond, and I tell Matt Curran all the time, like, hey, we'd love to go to Hawaii, how is it paid for, where are the students gonna stay, how are you gonna feed them, and let us know when you can provide all that, and they typically don't answer back. But this gentleman, Frank Hayes, he actually lives in Florida, he flew up here, he drove in the middle of summer to our office to hand deliver an invitation, and as soon as his niece told me that we had that invitation, I was like, okay, this is, this is real, this is something that they do truly want us, it's not just out of the blue. So we accepted it, and we performed on a regional and soon-to-be national television, they're gonna do those clips throughout the country, so we're, it's incredibly exciting. As of right now, Abington News has 296 likes for this, 32 comments, and they are asking for more videos, they wanna see it. So Abington Cam, also thank you, Abington Cam, for all their stuff they do for us, they're working on a video for us as well. Concert band and concert choir, we just did a tour, we are disrupting the school day, celebrating Veterans Day. We initially just do the annual luncheon, which is incredible, it just used to be the band, I think it was marching band in particular, then we invited the concert band, more students. Last year, I brought the concert choir, and then it hit me this year, it's like, we have a bus full of kids, let's just keep going, and that's what we did. So we were able to perform for, believe, first and second grade and fourth grade, hopefully to get some more students next time if I can kinda figure out the schedule, but a lot of great opportunities in sharing the work that we do. We had a great choral clinic for our seventh and eighth graders and our concert choir, we worked, welcomed professor from Berkeley College of Music, it was excellent, it was, students are asking for us to bring in more people, so I gotta find and work on that. And the last really big piece of news that I'm just thrilled about is that we kinda updated our curriculum for our grades five and six students using a book by Michael Francis Smith, it's called It's Time to Play, and oh my goodness, it has changed our program overnight, the students are singing, they're reading better, they're playing, and the retention piece is something that I find remarkable. I typically about this time, maybe about 20 or so students are like, yeah, this is fine, but it's not for me, I really, it's maybe like a half dozen students, so significant improvement on retention. Again, community first, enjoyment first, the music's a byproduct, they'll come later, they'll get it, but we just wanna make sure it's enjoyable, so just great news all around there. Participation in music aligns with the mission that you are all doing, every moment that you're doing music, you're thinking, you're thinking, how am I doing next to my neighbors, to the whole group around me, am I playing the right notes, rhythm, singing, am I, you know, do I have gum in my mouth? They're always thinking, they're, they're great participants in the classroom, we always aim to be the model, like, how could, what are classrooms could look like, and we hope to strive for like the best of the best in our work, and to, you know, share, you know, what the kids do and other teachers do really well, of course. It's a challenge, but it's definitely rewarding, so we definitely feel like we are working with you on achieving that mission. We are, again, on track to meet APS strategic objectives, there's certain curriculum things I really need to dig into, Dr. Bost and I discussed this, there's pieces where I wanna just get better at, but I feel like we're getting, getting there, K through two are some of the best curriculum that I believe we have. We have Thrill Share, that's been a blessing, we really haven't used it for marching band, but for the play, it's our classes, we're using that, we're able to reach to parents, and parents are able to reach us much faster, we're getting a lot of thumbs of approval, so thank you for supporting that initiative. Some of the challenges for, for the music department isn't that we don't want to communicate, it's just, it's really difficult, so this was, this was really helpful, so thank you, thank you. Again, we're always looking for new things to do, and the one thing that also excites me is our increased focus and investment in K through two, just making sure that they start to love and enjoy music early on, so they hopefully continuing all the way up through their, their last year here at the high school, hopefully at high school. There's like, actually, if you ever get bored and you wanna check out this drawing I have in my office, it literally shows little Timmy, what does Timmy need to know in kindergarten to be successful all the way through 12th grade, and it's, it's fun if you ever have a chance. So a lot of great things, and we're working with you to achieve your objectives. In terms of numbers, numbers tell a couple stories, they tell, you know, in short enjoyment, they could also share, you know, sometimes line up a little bit economically, so for our grade five and six numbers, a little bit lower, but I think that's due to, you know, some of the challenges with inflation, also instrument prices have skyrocketed, so, so that's been a challenge, I'm very blessed that we've been able to invest in instruments with your assistance with Abington Arts Council, beginner instruments, so if a student does ask for an instrument, we have been able to provide them instruments. I think I'm below, low in saxos right now, but we are, we are working very hard on that. Seven, eight band, a little low, I think it's, we just had some bumps over the past couple of years, but again, we're trying to work and just make this enjoyable so they'll stay. Our high school band blew up this year, we have 46 students, including 11 half-year students, absolutely incredible. Our chorus is kind of about that 100 number, I think that's a good number for them, and our high school chorus dipped a little bit, but that was more so to scheduling, we couldn't figure out a scheduling piece, so we, that was the best that we can do, but we're, again, trying to find engagement for those students, and a lot of those students that weren't able to get into the chorus are participating in drama, so we are, we are happy for that as well. So a lot of good signs, but a lot of things where, I'll keep this in my eyes, like, how can we continue to build these ensembles? And last but not least, I got some upcoming dates, we have our annual craft fairs, it's the 13th, we are hosting Semesba Festival auditions, we've been doing that since the building has been built, so we literally take over this building, and musicians from the South Shore audition to be a part of this group, the music parents help, it's, it's a lot of fun, if you like chaos, a lot of kids, and a lot of music, come visit us, it's a lot of fun. Our music department trip, actually, our wonderful chorus teacher Rebecca Harrison asked me about it today, she's like, is there any update about a New York trip? I'm like, no, right now, New York's out of our price range, it's 1,500 per student, it used to be about $800 per student, so it's just out of, out of what we can do, so we're trying to find, again, local things that where we can make music together, Thanksgiving Day Parade is a perfect example, we'll do our single Boston Day Museum, and also show at the evening, we'll do something like that. And then last but not least, our chorus and band concert dates, which are upcoming, I feel like I'm a little behind the ball because of everything happening the past couple of weeks, but they're gonna be great, they're a lot of fun, our band and chorus concerts are staples, our seventh and eighth graders perform with our high school students, community concerts, wonderful, and then our bands, five, six concert, you love to see lots of children making lots of music and lots of silly faces when they come on stage because they're so excited, please join us, so. That is essentially everything I have in short, I don't think I missed anything, but I thank you all so much for your endless support of what we do, I know the next couple of months are gonna be challenging, but just know that we, we love the work that you're doing, we support you, and thank you all for all, everything you're doing behind the scenes, so we'll get through it, okay, and I just wanna let you know that we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonelli, I was trying, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Leonelli?
I actually do.
Yes.
Can you tell us about the chorus trip to Bridgewater State University?
Ah, yes, I did forget to mention that one, so yes, so Bridgewater State University have been incredible partners to provide low-cost, non-audition opportunities for us, and the choral is actually a brand-new one, which is exciting, so essentially, directors decide on, I think it was about 10 students or so to participate, it's basically like what we can fit in a van, if we could fit more, we'd see if we could take Ms. Judy, we drive down to Bridgewater State University, we are given the music in advance, so they prepare, it's sometimes like more challenging music, and then they work with a guest conductor over the course of the entire day, and then put on a performance in the evening, and what, it's, it's challenging, but it's really fun, and what I find is those students that come back tend to be some of our future leaders, so this small investment definitely pays dividends in, down the road, imagining some of Ms. Hernandez's daughters go participating, then coming back and being leaders in our ensemble, for example, so it's, it's wonderful, and it's a great chance for them to see a university campus as well, that's just down the road to it.
Yes, first of all, congratulations on all of the things, I, I don't have time to list all the things to congratulate you on, but I guess my question is regarding the, some of the numbers, the enrollment numbers for the high school classes?
Yes.
I know you mentioned economics as, as part of the, for some of the low enrollment, it's also been my experience that sometimes it's a scheduling conflict where students maybe have to choose between like a music class and an AP class that they, they think they need, so I'm wondering, do you get to choo, are you able to schedule multiple sections of like the high school band, high school chorus?
Great question, that's one quick clarification, the numbers are really in the economics as more in grade five, grade six, the instruments. That's, when it goes to the high school, most students have instruments, or we have like some of the larger instruments like tuba or baritone sax, that most families wouldn't afford, or they're just like $6,000, incredible prices. Yes, really, it's, it's the scheduling, scheduling, scheduling. When, when students leave eighth grade, last year, I think 50% of possible band students for instrument, for instance, that could have continued, went to a different school, so we have that variable as well.
Okay.
So that already, we're, you know, the retention piece is tough, and then, you know, we work with, with Jonathan Bourne and their guidance team to try to find what works best, and I, our goal is to get as many students as possible, so I think some of the things that I always recommend to our students is, and to families, is, as well to our team in the office, is have the discussions early, like, what's, what's most important to you, because, you know, I'd love to do multiple sections, but we just don't have the staff or the space, so we're limited in that, also, I only have one timpani, so I can't make two types of kettles in multiple, in different rooms, so we have that challenge as well, so I think I'm rambling a little bit, but is that kinda answered just a little bit?
I think so, so there's just one section?
Yeah, wave a magic wand, AP classes, that they could be in the morning, and all the more fun stuff's in, co-curricular, curricular stuff's in the afternoon, that fixes it, but it's, it's a lot, it's very nuanced, and we always continue the conversation in a positive, cooperative manner, and you know, what, I don't think we'll get a fix, but we'll, we'll keep the dialogue open, which has been helpful, so, but I feel like, at least with the band, we, we got close, but the chorus was a little disappointing.
Can I just ask, on the economics side of grade five, six band, because when I looked at these slides ahead of time, I was wondering if economics played into that, because that, that is a really large class in terms of number of kids, so to see the enrollment dip surprised me, and I thought perhaps it's the economics, because the prices are quite high. Did we have any students ask for financial support that we could not assist them with, or do we think that the roadblock is that people don't wanna ask for the support?
That's a great question, I think it's the latter, I think you're, the asking for support is a tough one.
Yep.
Student comes up, actually, one student came up to me today, just moved to Abington, wanted to play saxophone, I gave him the saxophone, practice, we'll see you next week. We're able to do that, not able to do that with the entire class, but with students that, you know, would still wanna be a part of this. Yeah, I have numbers from Goulet and Co. from, since, I haven't seen the packet in quite over some time, but it's about 20 years of data, and every time there was a dip, like the 2008 recession, there's a dip, I'm sure if I saw numbers from the past five years, you'd see dips as well, so try to make as many opportunities as we can, the instrument part is, is tough, we do have bells that they can play, and pianos they can play in our classroom, so we try to provide opportunities, but I do, sometimes it is, asking for help part is tough.
I wonder if there's a community-wide opportunity for us to say, hey, if you have instruments, I know we do a good job within the APS district, but outside of the district to say, hey, if you have instruments lying around, we would love to...
I believe we've done that historically over the year, I don't know how we did it, but we have, I, I have to be very careful with how I ask for things, so I always have to make sure it's just done in a way where it's like, if you've got something lying around, we have to put the letters.
And there was success, and I, I think with the instruments that came in, and I also thank the music department, they were judicious around what they took, too, that there wasn't an additional cost to the district to have things repaired, that we couldn't, you know, and so, but we did, probably five years ago, did a kinda all-call, and, you know, people have the, their kid's flute in their attic that they haven't touched in 30 years, and that we could use, so if there are those things.
And that, and that is helpful, so we've, we've received donations, our, our marching percussion instruments were actually donated by Boston College, which was a $20,000 type amount, which I think that was like what it is now, but, but yeah, so we, we do ask, and I think it was $2,000 from that one drive of families coming in during COVID, so yes, any, any little bit helps, yes, of course.
Congratulations, very exciting, I know you bring a lot of smiles into the halls of this building, so, and the, and the other buildings.
If I can, just, if I may, to outline some of the success that we've seen, our music students, a lot of them sit in all their classes, and music classes, just one of them, and then the ones who are committed to marching band are practicing twice a week, they love sitting in the stands playing for football games, it's just, it brings it to a whole different level, but then oftentimes, what people don't realize is that might be us getting on a bus at 5 o'clock the next morning, and driving far away for a 12-hour day, which is a whole education in and of itself, it's a whole, it's a different kind of education, but it's a learning experience all the same, and then repeat for two months. And a lot of those kids play an instrument, but they might dance on the field, or they are also in the play, and the vast majority of the marching band kids play a sport or do another activity, most often several clubs, on top of everything else.
Marching band is sometimes tertiary or quaduchary to what other things that they do.
I have watched kids march in soccer uniforms straight off a field, I've watched kids literally run from cross-country onto a field, or run off a field to go to cross-country. There is so much that goes into any sort of performance-based, anything like this, and I, A, appreciate what, what the community's response has been to all of this, it's near and dear to my heart, because when you find yourself as an accidental coach for a dance team, it's, you want them to succeed, and what the community has provided in terms of support and care, and just being invested and being interested is big, but also, I know the hours and the commitment that you put in, and it's, it's a unique position, because you're doing your job here as you need to, but also you are doing so much of your job out there, and it's a lot, and so thank you for, because you don't get complacent, you are always thinking about how to make it a better experience for the kids and the families and the community, so that's just my little two cents of what I see from my view.
Thank you, we do it for the kids, and we do it for, you know, just the work that we do here, it's, it's not a, it's not a me thing.
Yeah, Mr. Leonelli, congratulations to you and the entire band on everything you were able to accomplish this year and other years, and what'll happen in the future years too. Thank you, Heidi, for all your time volunteering with them, that you do to help everything flow the way it does. I had one quick question, comment, first of all, I just wanna say, the high school numbers, I know you have the, the tough part with the scheduling, but take away last year where there's some jumps, like, they're significantly higher than they were a few years ago, and that's awesome to see. I want to ask one quick thing, and I get the grade five decline, do you see if there's like, is there like a common theme that you see on where like the same group of kids, like if you go diagonally down from grade five to grade six, like, there's a 20 to 30% drop from grade five to grade six, which, that would seem a little different, because if you get the instrument in five, usually you have it for six, is there like a common theme that you see when that happens?
Kind of the depreciation is, is national, over the, over the years, students do drop, the biggest drops would happen, any building shifts, so sixth to seventh is a drop, that's also a chance, when, when students decide what they like to do, and then from eighth to the 12th, I don't know if that answers your questions.
No, I mean, it's probably just, it, it looks, it's consistent, right, there's no spiking at any point in time, I was just, it was more, I would think that the decline would happen afterwards, where, like, for example, last year's, this year's grade six, which I'm assuming the far-right column is this year, right?
Yes, yes.
So they have 72 kids, but last year in grade five, they had 106 kids.
Yes.
So I was like, unless I'm thinking of that the wrong way, but like, just that 30-something decline?
Yeah, our, it's, for grade five, we have more, more students that typically play an instrument than don't, and then grades six at flip-flops.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
We, we wanna keep it, students as, as long as is possible, it's, there's lots of variables, sometimes friends pull them in different directions, sometimes it's, you know...
Especially at that age.
Yeah, sometimes they, they're like, I gave it a try for a year, and it's just not for me, we, we want them to enjoy it and stick with it as long as they can.
And it's great, I mean, those high school numbers keep coming up, I mean, that's great to see, so I mean, that's where it can be tough, especially if you look back at some of the numbers from a handful of years ago, it's doing awesome now, so congratulations.
To that point, thank you, thank you for that point, the, the larger these ensembles are, especially in high school, the more we can do, if you ask me, would you have done the Plymouth Parade that's broadcast live on TV with 15 students, I would have been like, not this year, but, but just even that, that bump of, I think we were at 25 or so, that, that, that does a lot.
That's awesome. Well, thank you, Mr. Leonelli, appreciate it, and congratulations to you and the team on everything you accomplished.
Thank you.
Congrats, thank you.
Congress, let me continue.
Great, thanks, Tim, have a good night. So in this, as we enter the season of gratitude, I want to share some good news and some items that I'm grateful for related to professional development in the Abington Public Schools. On November 4th, Election Day, as we have for the last previous two years, this was our third annual Abington Innovates half-day for staff, so our certified staff were able to select from a menu of professional development workshops for three one-hour sessions, and most of the workshops were presented by Abington Public Schools staff. So I am very grateful for the educators in the district who stepped up to share their passion and expertise with their colleagues, to the administrators who did the same, and also just generally support the day, and to the school committee for supporting this professional development. On the slide, there are just a few of the positive comments from staff about the day, and again, I'm grateful for everyone who participated, we even had some of our support staff who do not work on that day chose to come on their own to participate, so I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any, but I can say it was a success, and we look forward to renewing it one more time next year.
I have one question, one comment. First, congratulations on the excellent snacks, good to see that we were able to provide that. Was there any one session that booked out that seemed to be kind of the hot topic, that is something that, you know, maybe we could potentially down the road roll into either a parent or like a community-based presentation?
There are many that were sold out, so the presenter gives us sort of the size group they're comfortable with, it's either 15 or less, 30 or less, or unlimited, and so the few every year that focus on self-care for the teachers, they're always very popular. One of them focused on sort of letting out your anxiety and frustration in physical ways and in writing, that was very popular, but also a session that focused on trauma-informed education presented by some of our school adjustment counselors and school psychologists was also very popular, so that was in the seminar room for both sessions because of the number of people who were interested. So social, emotional learning and self-care, well-being, those tend to be very popular every year.
And the Plymouth County Comfort Dog Program, they also... Comfort Dog Program, they also came and gave a presentation. So Tim Cruz, the District Attorney for Plymouth County, along with comfort dogs from about eight different local agencies, including Harlow, and they gave a presentation on kind of the, how the program was developed and also the benefits of comfort dogs in the schools, which was
And that was, yeah, popular also.
They were, the dogs were the most popular people, I mean, item, not people, most popular people that attracted a lot of attention. And thank you to the townwide PTO and the local PTOs, the school-based PTOs for the snacks. That, that was very well received. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Dr. Bosta?
Is this year three of this or year four?
This is year three.
Year three, okay. Congratulations. I feel like it was a high bar that you set in year one and it continues to get higher, so.
And the amount of work that went into creating it. I mean, it's not that it's copy paste right now, but I know that you've put so much thought into it. I, we also know that if we ask you any question, we will get a color-coded PowerPoint by like 7:30 the next morning with your apologies for it being late. So I know the detail that you put into these things. So it's fantastic. Thank you.
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bosta. Appreciate it. Next, the reporter, the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Felicia Michelle.
Thank you. I'd like to speak a little bit about school choice participation. Each year, each school district in Massachusetts is required to, to opt out of school choice if they're not going to be a school choice district. So the, the standard is that everyone is school choice unless you opt out. And this is for the '26-'27 school year. So it would begin next August. And my recommendation, based on the unknown budget issues that we are facing, along with the class sizes that we have, is for the Abington Public Schools not to opt into school choice for the '26-'27 school year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that.
I have a quick one.
Yes.
How much do you know, so this is more just putting like kind of everything on the table kind of thing?
Yep.
So if you opt into school choice, not if you don't, if we don't opt out, we automatically opt in.
Correct.
There's an amount of money that we can receive, like per, is it per student or is it per?
Per student.
Okay.
It's about $6,000 a year per student. Once you, once you are in school choice and you allow a student into your district, then you are guaranteeing them a seat in your district through their 12th grade year. So if we did, for example, there were a few years that we allowed high school students school choice. We opted in, opted out K to eight and allowed high school students. Once we allow a freshman in on school choice, regardless of whether we opt out of school choice in the following years, that those students or that cohort of students can stay through graduation. The same goes if you allowed kindergarten and first graders, then those students would stay through 12th grade regardless of future decisions of opting in or opting out.
That makes sense. And I'm just, just to take it full circle where I was going with it, I'm guessing the amount of potential income, let's just call it revenue
Yep.
that would come from it is probably outweighed in your mind by the number of kids, the potential to still have a tough budget and staff and things of that nature.
Correct. For example, so for example, if we, right now, you know, I'm going to say in, our current fourth grade, for example, has 179 students. So next year, our fifth grade would have approximately 179 students, which is about 26 students per class. If we were to open up for school choice for grade five, that would increase that, those classes with most likely not enough revenue to buy another teacher.
Got it.
So it would increase the existing structure that we have and not bring in enough revenue to offset that. So it would be the class size plus specials plus other services students might need. And so that would be a concern for us.
And not to mention the upcoming budget cycle, which we all know bits and pieces and rumors of, but that doesn't even take that into account.
Correct. Yep.
Anybody else have any questions?
This does not preclude any of our students from going out to a different district if they so choose.
Correct. This is for Abington to accept students from other school districts. It does not stop Abington students to choice into surrounding communities.
And if I could just add, not only the buying the teacher piece, but we don't have currently, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have excess space. It's not like we have classrooms that are currently vacant.
That is correct. We don't have room for more classrooms.
Okay. And you can't accept a student in year one of school choice. It's not like we can say, we'll accept a student if they don't have ancillary services, right? You accept a student for any student that walks in the door. So it could be a student that requires no additional services or a student that requires a lot of additional services either in year one or in the future.
That's correct.
So we can't really necessarily quantify the cost of this student. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. If we, when we opt in, when we do participate, is there a limit on how many we, we say? Like when we opt in, is it, okay, we can take up to this many students or is it?
Yes, you can have whatever restrictions the, the committee decides. So you could, for example, say, we'll accept five ninth graders.
Okay.
For example, or 20 first graders, or whatever the, the number, the number is.
Okay.
You can be restrictive. But then those students, those 20 or five in ninth grade become five 10th graders, five 11th graders, five 12th graders. And if you backfill them or not, if you allow it the next year, then you'll have five ninth graders and five 10th graders.
Anybody else have any more questions?
Based on, based on what I'm hearing, I'm going to make a motion to opt the Abington Public Schools out of school choice for the 2026-'27 school year. Going to be looking for a second or if anybody would like to make another motion?
Oh, second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay. Thank you.
Our next, my next item is an update on our strategic planning. And as we spoke about in our previous meetings, we will be reporting out tonight on district operations. That will be Sarah Gany and Julie Thompson. And then on communication, which is Rich Baikowski and Annie Robinson. Update for our last year and then looking forward to our strategic plan goals for this year.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Julie and I will be going first. We will be providing an update on district operations from the strategic plan. This objective, as it did last year, we're focusing on ensuring our facilities and district operations are providing high-quality, safe teaching, learning environments for all students, staff and families. This year's initiative continues to focus on maintaining schools that are both innovative and physically safe through best practices and preventative measures. It also includes evaluating and planning for our aging elementary school buildings. However, due to the town's current financial challenges, we are not yet in a position to begin requesting funding for a feasibility study through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So we, we have not progressed on that portion of the initiative at this time. We are confident though that that day and that time will, will come, given that both the Beaverbrook and Woodsdale are both aging facilities that will require thoughtful planning in the future as we know. I will now turn it over to Principal Thompson, who will discuss the action steps that we have been taking and will continue to take this school year.
Thank you. We are, I'm going to update on emergency preparedness. We continue to prioritize safety through regular emergency drills and staff training. After each drill, we review our procedures with local authorities and identify any necessary improvements with the authorities, but also we debrief with our staff as well. The work is consistent ongoing throughout the school year. And all new hires to Abington Public Schools are also receiving Alice Protocol training as part of their onboarding process. It facility, facilities monitoring at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale is an ongoing process. We continue to monitor the building conditions closely with our Director of Maintenance, who's, works wonders. And while we're not yet able to move forward with an MSBA feasibility study, we are keeping track of needs, tracking expenses and maintaining readiness for when it is the right time to take that next step. And we remain committed to carrying out this work each day to ensure that our schools are safe, well-supported and continually innovative for the entire school community. Any questions for us?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you want to, or I can speak about our collaboration with Abington Police and Fire at the end of October?
Um, well, you can.
Sorry. We were invited to work, it's the first time we've done this. All of our principals, along with members of the Police Department and Fire Department, spent a day with a trainer from Connecticut. And we spent the day going through emergency preparedness in each of our school buildings and did, spent the afternoon doing tabletop exercises with full, with full table satellite imaging of each of the school buildings with the administration from that school, along with members of the Police Department, Fire Department, talking about if there was an incident in a school, where students would go, where police would be, where fire would be, and discussions around our plans and also their plans and collaborating on best practices. And I, I just, I think it was a great opportunity. I want to thank Chief Bonnie and Chief Glenn for being with us that day and their staffs. And we made a commitment to continue that and have more regular tabletop discussions. I think we all left there feeling like, wow, this is a lot, but also the power of all of us coming together and spending that day together.
And feeling as though we were all on a team and it wasn't just the school building in isolation.
Yep. Thank you.
That's great to hear.
One question. This is more of a facilities, but it, it does go, it rolls into safety as well. We know that a lot of what's happening, particularly at Beaverbrook, given age and availability of resources, some of it is duct tape and prayer. Hoping that we were potentially going to be able to be in more of a position to start looking at next steps, knowing financially where we are. Do we have Plan Bs or CD up to F for things that could potentially break and not be able to have serviceable parts anymore?
I'll let, yeah, Mrs. Gany answer that.
I can take that. We, we have moved forward with actually getting a quote to replace the heating system at Beaverbrook because we do need to have that plan in place if that perhaps is what we're going to do. Obviously, it's quite expensive, but we have to have that plan to potentially put that on a capital plan in the future to replace some of the machinery inside of the boiler room. But we continue to have pieces and parts replaced and have been successful to date. But at this time, it's just a part-by-part procedure. And we have, as we have talked about in the past, we've been able to get parts from different buildings in town and have been fortunate enough to be able to do that. But if we are not able to move forward with the feasibility study, we will have to move forward with other plans to replace specific systems within the building. And that has an expense to it.
Sure. Because the boiler system that they have there.
Mm-hmm.
That's not the original system, is it? Can't.
The, the boilers are the boilers. The issue that we're, besides that, those fixing issues, the issues that we're seeing are the heating pipes that are buried in the concrete slab.
Right.
From 60, 70 years ago. Those are becoming the bigger issue.
Primary culprits.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask if we, so if we were to request a feasibility study in spring of 2027, that's, that's the first time we would be able to do it if we choose not to do it in this budget cycle. And I completely acknowledge and appreciate the financial condition the town is in and most towns are in. So spring of 2027, first time we'd ask for a feasibility study. When would school open? Like that's seven, eight years after that, correct?
Correct. There's also the MSBA process. So there's the Abington process. And then there's also the, you actually have to be invited into the feasibility to, to have MSBA partner with you on a reimbursement. So yes, we are looking at minimally, if, if everything we got invited in, when we looked to the town meeting and the town voted the money for a feasibility, from that day, we're probably looking at six years to open doors.
As we talk about needing to invest some capital money on maintaining, there is still a very long period of time where we need to keep these schools open for students. We need to spend that money. It's not like we can hold off and wait for this new building because that new building is not within sight of our current.
Our commitment to the community is to spend the money that we have to, not the money that we want to.
Yep.
And so, yes.
And this is part of safety.
Yep.
Cold kids cannot learn. When you have to dig up floors, it's, so, yeah, I think it's just something that we all have to consider and.
Yes.
Woodsdale roof falls under, the infamous Woodsdale roof for years and years and years falls under the same
Yep.
Yep.
Sculpt too.
Yes.
Agree.
Take a prayer.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you, Ms. Gany.
Thank you.
Yep. We have Rich Baikowski, our Director of Technology, and Annie Robinson, the Director of the AEP, discussing our strategic objectives around communications.
Good evening, everybody. So in the area of communication, I'm just going to review what our objective is, what our action steps are that we've been working on, and a bit of our progress on those. And then Mr. Baikowski will jump in, in a little bit more in-depth data regarding where we are in terms of our progress. So this strategic, strategic objective is all around improving communication, communication between home and school, communication between schools, communication within schools, and making sure that we have a centralized system. So becoming more consistent, more centralized, everybody using a similar method of communication. Our action steps for this, for this objective are, the first one's all was around training. And at this point, we feel like we've, that one has been completed. All staff have been trained in the use of the rooms by Thrill Share system, which is a direct communication system. You heard Mr. Leonelli speak about how he's using it within the music department with great success. So that's wonderful to hear. Our second action step is around defining what the expectations are for use. And that is something that is ongoing at this time. We're still kind of working through what is the expectation and how does that differ from grade level building to building. Our third action step is around implementation and requirements for use. What is it that we are expecting our staff to be? How are we expecting them to be using it and with frequency and content and information such as that? And then our fourth action step is around an ongoing review. So we're always, we want to always be assessing where we're at with it, where, where the challenges are with it, the things that are positive with it, and any changes that we need to make around that. So Mr. Baikowski's going to speak a little bit. So, Mr. Baikowski's going to speak a little bit more in-depth with some specific data.
Hello, everybody. I swear Tim Leonelli was not a plant. I did not pay him to sell the system, but he has been a great proponent of the move to Thrill Share, and he's used it quite a bit. He's actually the number four person in the district who sends out announcements to folks, and he uses it a ton.
Number four, I can imagine.
He, you know, he's obviously a strong user, and so we're excited about it. So, what I want to talk about a little bit is the, is a little bit of data behind Thrill Share and how much it's being used, and because it speaks to some of these things. We, as administrators and as a district, need to look at it, understand how it's being used, understand who the power users are, and then, you know, continue to grow the system. So, the, I have some data. We, we have a meeting every month with a representative from Aptige, is the name of the company that makes Thrill Share, and so we can follow up with that person with any questions we have for support, and they also give us some analytics data. So, as of October 31st, eighty-nine percent of Abington Public School staff members have activated their rooms account. That is a little bit of an underestimation of the number because we created the accounts in the summer, and folks who have retired, or if other, if people have left the district, or there are even some people who might be an aide in the classroom, they were all create, all had accounts created, and they don't necessarily need them. If they're not here, they're not using them. So, I would say that number's probably more like ninety-five percent of our staff, which is great. And of those folks that, that are active in the system, sixty-nine percent of staff used rooms during the month of October. So, that's a number that's good, but it might be a spot where we look at it and say, why is it only sixty-nine percent? Why isn't it seventy-five percent? Or whatever that might be in there. There are certainly reasons behind that, and that's what we're kind of digging into. Announcements, like I said, Mr. Leonelli is the number four announcement maker in the district, and what that is, it's a message that teachers can send to their families based on the kids who are in their classes. So, Tim, in Tim's case, it has a lot to do with drama too, so he's created a room for his drama group or for his music group, and he can send announcements to families easily through rooms without having to track down email addresses and all that. It's all done for him on the back end. We had seven hundred and thirty-four total district announcements sent over the course of October, and that was up from five hundred and eighty-one in September. So, things are growing, you know, people are getting used to the prom, to the platform a little bit more and, you know, making more use of it. The other side of Thrill Share is the Guardians, right? So, we have, you know, everybody in the district who, you know, the staff members who are using it. But on the Guardian side, eighty-five percent of our Guardians have activated their accounts and rooms right now, which is an unbelievable number. You hope to get somewhere around sixty-five to seventy because some families, only one person is maybe activating their account. You know, both priority Guardians in Aspen receive invites. Not everyone's going to accept it, but again, eighty-five percent of our Guardians is fantastic. And of that number, eighty-eight percent were active in the month of October. So, Guardians have signed up, and they're using the platform, which is great news. I talked about announcements, which is sort of the broadcast message that they send out. The other part of rooms that we can utilize is messages, which are more direct. It's almost like a texting system built into it. We sent, as a district, four thousand one hundred and forty-three messages to families over the course of October, and Guardians sent back three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. So, again, the engagement is good. Certainly, I'm, I'm happy with where we are, just a few months into it. And again, we can use data like this to just keep growing the platform and make sure people understand how to use it. I'm especially excited about the Guardians being connected because that's a hoop to jump through on their end, and it's not always the most, you know, simple thing to get that information out to people, but people have figured it out, people have asked questions. We did have Vicki Graham at a few parent events towards the beginning of the year to help parents who got stuck, and so things have been going pretty well. So, that's the update on where we stand with our district communications and answer any questions that you might have.
I have two questions. The first being, for the educators who are sending messages, do they have the capability to copy paste between different classrooms? Like, is it easy for them to recall messages either from last year or from other classes? To make it easy for them to send out somewhat tailored but somewhat copied messages from?
Sure, there's maybe two answers to that question. One is, it's, in the platform, it's super easy to copy and paste. You could send a message to one of your rooms, which maybe that's your first period class, and you could copy and paste it into your second period class. But there's also a way in the system where you, you really just join them all together. So, you can send out a message to everybody just by checking off a box. So, it's not like you have to go to one place, make, send a message, go to another place and recreate it. You, you have both options. You can send a personalized one to Period One, or you can just check off boxes and send everything to all eight periods if you want to.
And then how is the, where are we on the guidance to educators on whether email is priority for a student and Guardian conversation or whether it's rooms? Or is that still at a point where educators decide what works best for them and communicate accordingly?
We haven't gotten to a point, or we don't have a mandate of which is kind of better. There are, I would argue that with everyone having a phone now, like, we should move towards the platform where the message just pops up on your phone. But there are certainly instances where sending an email is something that you, you don't necessarily want to send a seven paragraph text message to somebody, right? So, there would certainly be instances of where an email makes more sense. I think it's mostly left up to the staff right now, but if I'm going to lean on Tim again, in the past, he would create giant email groups for everybody in his programs, all the parents, so that he could communicate with them. He said it would take him hours, and now he can just use rooms because it's built for him already, and the message is out, and it's buzzing on someone's phone. So, you know, there'll be, you know, we have to have everybody adopt it, and I think we'll move towards rooms being sort of the preferred platform, and I think people are even starting to get to the point where, yeah, I'm sending rooms messages, not emails, but there will always be, you know, kind of a balance where an email may, may make more sense depending on the message that's being sent.
Can I add one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any link between Canvas and Rooms so that educators can say, check out my Canvas page? Like, is there any integration there?
There is not.
Okay.
In order for families to look at a Canvas page, they either have to create an Observer account, which is Canvas exclusive, or kind of log in as their kid. We have provided directions on creating the Observer accounts before, and so that is something that a staff member could provide, but there isn't like an automatic connection between the two.
I have a question about the, the messaging with, with Guardians, and this is probably more of a question for the people, the admins at the table. Have there been any reports, like anecdotally, of increased engagement with EL families since the platform translates? Do we have any information?
I haven't really heard anything. The, the thing with the, the thing with the EL families that we know is a, is a, is kind of a rule is that they don't necessarily use email. They're more into using WhatsApp and using their phone to communicate. All of those families are in rooms, and all of them are able to, to activate. And I know I actually got an email from an EL staff member at the middle school this week because a family was having trouble logging in, so we helped to sort that out for them. So, I know that the system is being used, but we used a different platform last year that was very well received, and I'm not sure we've moved perfectly into the new one with that population, but it's certainly available, and we'll keep supporting those populations as much as we need to.
Okay.
And it interprets in the home language.
Correct. It, it does all the automatic translation.
Right, that's why I asked, like, if it had increased engagement with those families.
I think that it has, like, Rich said, it hasn't been a necessarily smooth transition without some difficulty from our previous platform, Two Rooms, but like Rich said, he's been working through that with the EL teachers, and Vicki has also provided more direction and opportunity for families.
Rich, can I ask you two quick ones? So, can the Guardians begin the messaging with the staff, or can they only reply back to a message sent from a staff member?
I think once the Guardians sign in, they have access to the staff members, so they can send a message, but I, I'm not a fan.
I sent a message.
Okay. So, I was going to say, hand up, who hasn't? The other one, you were mentioning the usage by Guardians. Do you find that, is there a trend by grade, or is there a trend by, like, let's call it like block of grades, call it by school, that the younger the kid, the more engaged or less engaged? Or is it just random?
See, I don't know if it tells me Guardians by school. Oh, it does. So, Guardian messages, there are over two thousand at Beaverbrook. There are over a thousand at Woodsdale. And then there are about a thousand at the middle school. I would say around five hundred at the high school, and then about four hundred, I'd say, at AEP. You know, and AEP is a much smaller.
Yeah, so a trend, the usage by Guardians trends lower as they get, as a student gets older.
It does, it does seem that way.
Which makes, especially high school, I mean, a lot of the communication directly with the kids.
Correct.
So, okay, that, that's, I was just looking to figure out if that was the case, so thank you.
Yep.
I'm also finding those, so like, we're using, they've opted to use rooms for junior class auction. And we've seen an uptick in the number of parents who are taking part in the process because all of the information is streamlined and is in one place. So, more people feel like they're part, they can be part of the process because they understand how it's working.
Pass that down to the next year when you give the advice to the next year.
As someone who has been in the school district for quite a while now, I feel like you have worked wonders with the communication system. It is so much better than it was when, when my kids started. It is unbelievable in real time, and I do love rooms because if I am, if I look down and I see an alert, I know it's a school-based thing. It's a much more immediate thing. If people aren't on it, I really hope they get on it. But the one funny snafu we found is between announcements and messages because I don't think people realize that they work slightly differently. And so, we've been in situations where people were like, oh, I saw it and I can't find it anymore, and it was because it was sent as a message, which kind of gets hidden as opposed to an announcement which sits there. So, just as a point of fact, like, for the future, if that might be something that would be interesting for families to know, that announcements and messages don't necessarily work the same.
Sure, and I think on our side, it's something that maybe we just need to improve as a district too because it's most like, I think at the beginning of the year, some people were sending large messages out that they really wanted to be announcements, and we've tried to watch what's happening and sort of head that off so people just receive a little bit more training inside the district. Like, this makes more sense to send as an announcement versus a message where it's easier to find in the future.
Are you finding more engagement with students as they use rooms?
We, we haven't really rolled it out with students that much. There are limited, like, the Student Council at the middle school has been using it a little bit, and I think a few classes at the high school.
Drama was using it too.
But it hasn't really spread like wildfire with, with students. And part of that is a limitation where the students don't use their phones during the day, right? So, even if they were being communicated with rooms, they have to do it via a webpage, which they may or may not go to anyway. So, in the case of drama where they know it's happening, I think that.
And it's happening after school hours, so the announcements.
Also, yeah, like, a lot of like, I think in the future, and I think one of the goals might be to, to have more kids using it because teams, like, coaches can send quick messages to all their kids without, you know, having to rely on one kid texting. Oh, text everybody else on the team.
That was my next question. Are we going to move towards, like, the athletics teams and things like that?
I have had, like, preliminary discussions with Pete Serino about, you know, using it more with athletics. So, I would, I, there's no reason for us not to. You know, it doesn't cost us anything more, and it'll improve communication, so it'll be a future goal.
Thank you.
Rich, just to piggyback off what Heidi said, when I started, we sent out class placements via US Postal Service, and half of them got lost.
Sent it all to Brock and hoped they'd come back, yeah.
We posted on the windows of the school.
Where we've, where we, that was, I said, where I, when I started, so, thank you. Thank you for everything done to your staff too.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sarah and Annie as well.
We are lucky enough tonight to have our first School Committee Student Rep update by Andrew Van Luling. So, he came fresh off the Powderpuff Football Field to join us here tonight. So, Andrew?
Yes, good evening. This is just like a brief presentation for like a kind of like look into Abington High School from the student's perspective. We'll start off with this past Thursday and Friday, we had the amazing school play of The Curse of the Bard. It was an amazing play that was performed very well by both actors and stage crew. And that night, they actually announced the Spring Play, which is a musical called Into the Woods, which is a great, quite interesting. And a brief look at the sports, we had an amazing year for fall sports. Boys soccer won their first ever Social League title, and they made it to the Elite Eight of the playoffs, which was awesome. Football won the Social League title alone and also made it to the Elite Eight of playoffs as well. Girls Cross Country made their first All-State Meet, which is amazing. And then Boys Cross Country also had one boy attend the All-State Meet, which is awesome. And as you heard from Mr. Leonelli, who's not here with us anymore, but Band won the state championship and also was a big part of the Plymouth Thanksgiving Parade, which is awesome. And Cheer qualified for States on Saturday, and they performed very well. Captain Michaela Gunning said that they quote-unquote "hit," which is apparently a good thing. I heard that, and I was just kind of like, oh, I'm sorry. We also had Spirit Week as like kind of a celebration into Turkey Day. Thursday was Greenway Pride Day. Friday, Friday was Flannel Friday Day. And Monday was PJ Day, Tuesday Jersey Day, and tomorrow is Color Wars. Each grade wears a different color for the pep rally, and the pep rally is tomorrow. As you saw, as you were walking in, each hallway is very decorated. Each grade decorates their own hallways with their themes, and the themes are senior superheroes, junior jungle, sophomore slumber, and festive freshmen. So, another, oh, and there are many different games played at the pep rally. We have the mattress race, three-legged race, musical chairs, tug-of-war, and dodgeball. So, Mr. Born better watch out. Junior Class Auction will be held on December 4th at 6:00 PM. It's a very important fundraiser. It's aimed to help fund the junior class prom and every other activity that they have throughout their high school careers. And there are very diff, various different items with their silent auction, raffles, and live auction, which is hosted, which is emceed by the man, the myth, the legend, Sean Riley. And then for Thanksgiving, football is heading to Women Hansen for the one hundred and fourteenth Annual Turkey Day Football Game. And also, Mr. Born told me it's the third longest streak in the country, which is quite interesting. And then to wrap it up, very hot topic in the school, the phone policy. I mean, from a student's perspective, obviously, not have, not being able to use your phones during class time is not fun, but it's very productive, and I hope my friends aren't watching this, but over the past two years, it's been awesome. My sophomore year, which was the final year of like no phone policy, I mean, you'd walk into Bridge Block Studies, and there would just be everybody with their face and their phones, like, not getting the help that they really needed from teachers. But, I mean, from the last two years, there's been more school spirit. I mean, a lot of people have just been like talking actually in Bridge Block, which is quite interesting, quite interesting, and a lot more students have been, been able to get more help from teachers. So, phone policy has been great. So, yeah, that's pretty much.
And I did not ask him to.
I know, I really hope my friends didn't.
Andrew, thank you very much. I appreciate. That was a very well, that was a lot of details and a lot, that a lot of us would not know otherwise, so greatly appreciated. Good luck to you on Thursday.
Thank you very much.
In the game, beat Women Hansen. How many years in a row would that be? How many years in a row, do you know? Have you lost to them?
I've never lost to them in my career.
So, at least four in a row, so.
Yep.
So, good luck to you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on, report to the Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Saragini.
Okay, so, last but not least, tonight, I will be presenting our FY '26 Salary and Expense Budget allocations. This year, I just want to take a brief moment to explain how we get to these numbers. I thought that that would be a nice time to do this. So, it really starts out with our salary number. We go through a thoughtful, very specific calculation of how we get to that number. We go through all of our contractual obligations, all of our negotiated salary increases, our subs and lanes, our stipends, our, our any known staffing, hiring, changes, et cetera. And then from there, we have, we build on our expenses, which is going to be our special ed expenses, our transportation expenses, regular, special ed. ed expenses, our transportation expenses, regular special ed, our instructional needs, our utilities, our technology, so we're building and building on both sides until we can come up with, you know, two numbers that are going to equal our one budget number. So then, it's like, okay, so we have this balance between these two numbers, so how do we stay on track throughout the year to make sure that we are staying where we need to be? So after each payroll cycle, we have our payroll and our warrant, which you see every other week. Those reports are reviewed, closely monitored, and logged into different reports that I keep and track, and my team monitors. We're making sure that our year-to-date spending is aligning with our forecasting projections. So we can identify every other week if at any point there's any variances that we need to get ahead of, adjust proactively to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. And staying on top of it and maintaining that constant oversight is truly the key to success. So you're, you know, creating these numbers upfront and keeping on track all throughout the year to make sure that you're going to finish out the year staying within the budget for both of those numbers. And so tonight, I have those two numbers, and those have been established based on what I described earlier. And, you know, describing all of this to you tonight, and because of this thorough, reliable process that honestly has been passed down from generation to generation in Abington, I have complete confidence that our FY26 budget will fully support our staffing and operational needs in Abington.
Thank you, Sarah.
So with that, our proposed FY26 budget allocations are as follows. For salaries, $24,781,792. For expenses, $7,572,473. For a total budget number of $32,354,265. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Just barring anything, in past history, if we were to have any budget busters out there, what do those tend to come in the form of?
So a budget buster is typically, in my experience, my 10 years' experience, Felicia can jump in, it's not typically going to come in the salary line item, because most of that is pre-established. We pretty much know and can predict what's going to happen in that area. A budget buster is typically going to happen on the expense line item. So if some sort of budget buster comes up, and again, it's going to be something that's variable, so it's going to be something that happens with special education, something unexpected that we didn't know about, that we can't control. It's going to be something we can't control. And at that point, we're going to come up with a plan to cover it, and we have other ways that we can do that, and we meet as a team to come up with a plan to do that. But most of the things that we do are well-controlled. We do have some variable items that we watch throughout the year and come up with a plan accordingly to deal with.
Or potential facilities.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is this a service-level budget?
This current budget.
This is current.
Yeah, that's the current budget.
This is just the, yep, this is just the FY26 budget. Yep. FY26 budget, yep.
Can I just, to, just to put an exclamation point on what Sarah said, if we were to have an unexpected expense, and it would be on the expense side.
Yep.
It will be very well-known. It will be, here's the bill for the student that moved here from Florida that needs a $500,000 placement. Here's the bill for the boiler at the Woodsdale, or the, it's going to be something that is very specific, something that we can point to. In my, knock on wood, 18 years of doing the budget, we have been able to, you know, we don't, there's not a lot of money, well, there's a lot of money on, I shouldn't say there isn't, there's a lot of money on the expense side. 99.9% of that is allocated to very specific items. But we have had to, at times, say, oh, here this added expense has come up, so we're not going to do something that we had planned to do. Just like what happens in your house when you have to replace the muffler on your car. It doesn't mean you have to cancel cable forever, but you might not have Netflix for a couple of months. So we're able to do that within what we have, but if there's a budget buster, it's going to be a thing.
And I do want to add, you know, in September, you know, we did pump the brakes on spending, if you recall, and that is in anticipation of budget busters, that there have been, you know, minor maintenance expenses that come up, that we do have to make those decisions to kind of speed up, slow down, to, to, to be as careful as we can. And that, and that is, that is our, that is our job, is to, to be able to, to monitor this closely, and that's a bi-weekly commitment that we have. And as I said, it's the, the ongoing oversight and not taking your eye off of it that is truly the key to success with this. It's a constant monitoring and adjusting as needed.
Anybody else have any questions for Sarah?
Can I just confirm, the majority of our large-dollar contracts that we have in place, thinking about like, transportation, special education, those types of things for the population that we have, that we know about, none of those renew like, calendar year, right? Like, we have a line of sight for FY26 that shouldn't change for things like transportation contract and what we pay to some of our district placements, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yep.
Utilities are the only one that's on a calendar year for us.
Yep.
If there's nothing else, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 salary and expense allocation as presented by Mrs. Gani.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sarah. This is where it always gets weird, looking at these dates. So our next school committee meeting date will be Tuesday, January 6, 2026, at 6:30 PM here in the library. That will also kick off like Tonight City with a public hearing. It'll be a public hearing on our budget, to start that off, as we talk about the budget. Some dates, remember, tomorrow, November 26 is early release, the Thanksgiving break is Thursday and Friday.
There's no lunch.
There is also, yeah, no lunch at any school, right? No lunch at any schools tomorrow. By the time anybody sees this, you'll have already known that probably. Tuesday, December 2nd, next week, Woodsdale PTO meeting in the cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, December 3rd, the music parents meeting in the middle high school band room at 6:30 PM. On Thursday, December 4th, thank you, Andrew, there's two things. One is the junior class auction, I think you said at 6:00 PM?
Uh, yes.
In the middle school, middle school slash high school cafeteria downstairs. And at the same time, there's a Beaverbrook PTO meeting at 7:00 PM in their cafeteria. Monday, December 8th, is a middle school PTO meeting in the cafeteria downstairs. Also, Monday, December 8th, is an in-service early release day for students. And then Tuesday, December 23rd, will be a half-day. There is school Monday, December 22nd, and Tuesday, December 23rd, being a half-day through January 6, 2020, January 2nd, 2026. There is a no-school for a holiday break. That sounds way out there. Before we look to adjourn, does anybody have anything they want to add? No? All right. I would just like to say happy holidays to everybody. See everybody in the next year. By the time you see this, it's going to look really weird. So we'll see everybody in January, and with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.